This conference will now be recorded.
We are good to go.
Great, great. I'm glad to be back.
We're glad to have you.
So glad you're better. It's been rough, I can tell you that. It's not over yet. But we'll get one day at a time behind us. Just a sample of what stuff they can do to you overnight. Well, we'll get started and we'll go to number two, which is council discussion of face covering ordinance update. And I think Steven's got some comments, but I've been around too, just like the rest of you. Thank God for the shots. And people are wearing the mask in places I've been, so I've been happy about that, especially restaurants. And I'll turn it over to Steven and let him give you update.
So I'm just going to go through a little bit like I do every month, an update kind of where we are with cases, testing. And I actually have one in here now, whoops, to talk about vaccinations. Now, since the mayor mentioned that, DHEC is beginning to track those. So just to give you an idea of where we are on the daily positive cases. The red line there shows where we are as of Friday. If you remember the data that DHEC reports runs about two days behind. So this is through Friday of last week. And the red line is just to show you kind of where our seven day average of cases is in comparison to where we've been back since April. The line shows you that we are pre surge, we're back around where we were during summer, going into the fall. Before we started this big surge over the holidays. So where that shows is kind of the cumulative cases. Again, you know, we track kind of how many days it takes to go 1,000 cases. As of three, five, we were a little over 16,700 cases. Just to give you an idea, that is puts us at about 13% of the entire populations of Pickens County that has tested positive to date. Over since April. But as you can see, we peaked out right after the first of the year with it taking about five, six, seven days. Right there between the first of December up until about the first of the year, we were averaging between five and eight days to go 1,000 cases. We've seen that peak begin to come down. We've dropped to 11, the seven, and the current pace we're on right now, if it continues since the last thousand, will be about 27 days, which puts us back towards the end of summer. Right before the cases started to decline. So I will say that the numbers are going in a positive direction. They're going back where they were before we saw the climb in cases. Again, 14 day running average, you can see we're back to where we were. When we had our first initial peak in summer of last year, as well as before this real high spike over the holidays and winter. To go through and show you kind of the number of deaths by week, you can see that it begun to decline as well. Back to where we were pre surge. The percent positive of test results, as you can see, the gray at the bottom kind of shows you how many tests are being taken. So the test numbers aren't, the number of tests being taken aren't down significantly. These aren't down as significant as they were to where they were before the holiday surge. But the percent positive is way down, is actually down to about one of our lowest seven day averages that we've had so far. You can go back and look to the left side back during last summer. In late spring, we were down below about 5% and that's about where we are now, which is a positive thing. So vaccinations, so to, through Friday of last week, there have been a little over 19,000 people in Pickens County that have started their vaccination. That means they've received either one of their shots or both of their shots. If you go by our total population, that's about 15%, 15 and a half percent of the county. DHEC is tracking by population over 15. And the reason for is none of the vaccines are approved for anybody below that age as of yet. They're working towards approving the, getting to the vaccine trials and stuff so they can actually go into younger children. But right now they're only approved for some are 18 and up. And I think one of them is 15 and up, and that's why they're tracking those numbers. If you look at the percent vaccinated over those that are eligible, we're just pushing close to 19% of the county has been vaccinated. And that's, that puts us in 15th out of 46 counties in the state for vaccination rate. And if you look on the right, you can kind of see how that vaccination is breaking out. And you can really see that 1A with 65 plus being the vast majority that have been vaccinated. And my guess is what you would see in those numbers below that in the age brackets would be your first responders, your medical, and people like that that have qualified under 1A. And with 1B opening up today, you should see probably more than that 55 to 64 age range start getting vaccinated. Since they are now, as of today, you can start at age 55. So where that brings us is just kind of in discussion of the face covering ordinance. We said we would review it every month. Just as a reminder, it went into effect December of 2020. Just had these in here as kind of a reminder of some of the guidelines associated with it. I know we talked last month about the potential of adding in penalty for compliance. From reaching out to council based on the way the data is going, the direction I was received from council. And mayor was that just to continue forward with it as is through this meeting. With no ordinance to put the penalty in there. Or a resolution to end it. So again, I just put in some information in there. And then the last thing is the governor did issue an executive order on Friday. That he has to do one every 15 days. That's as far as he can do an executive order for, to extend his emergency declaration. Our face covering ordinance is tied to his emergency declaration. It says so long as he continues to renew it, the ordinance will remain in place unless council actually takes a vote to end the face covering requirement. But the governor did remove the requirement for face coverings in restaurants, state facilities, and a couple other places. But it still states that those are encouraged. The local ordinances that are in place and counties, municipalities are still in place. For example, in the city of Easely, even though the governor does not require a mask at a restaurant, our ordinance would still be in place saying that it is required inside the city of Easely. Places that don't have an ordinance, it would disappear. It would be become optional for that restaurant or business of the governor, since he did not specifically, if it was not specifically stated. Again, last thing that we need some guidance from council on, we have been restricting the use of our facilities. Based on the numbers that we were seeing, they've been limited to 50% occupancy. I think we've tried to cap everything at no more than about 75 per indoor facility. We've also been limiting attendance at athletic events to manage the crowd sizes, especially in the gym for volleyball and basketball. We'd like council's guidance on these restrictions, especially the police, they're receiving more requests for events outdoors. 5Ks now that it's warming up, churches that are wanting to use the amphitheater for Easter. Some situations like that where they're wanting to know if they can actually increase the crowd size over what we've been restricting. So we wanted to get council's guidance on that as we move forward, so we know how to address those issues. I can answer any questions that council may have and the staff and department heads are on here as well.
Based on what I'm seeing in the reduction of cases, particularly for outdoor events, I would think that we ought to be able to go to 75% occupancy. Or 75% of the crowd space size. I'm pleased with what I'm seeing.
I agree, Pat. It's very encouraging, the numbers that you gathered for us. Steven, we're moving in the right direction, so let's just keep it going.
We, we did talk about it a little bit today too. And I'm like you, I have the same idea. I think we should let the outdoor facilities be used. And the 75% is fine with me, but we also want to make them still have the mandate of wearing masks. When they are within the six foot distance of each other, if at all possible, unless they're eating.
I'm okay with making that change as well.
And just for an example, I think the amphitheater is, I want to say it's around four or 450 for use in the amphitheater. So that would allow probably about 300 to 350 people in there. But again, if they're within six feet, we would require them to mask unless they're eating or drinking or the other exemptions that are in there.
Terry?
I just had it. He was telling us current values of COVID. I got a newspaper here dated back, I've held on to since February 14th. And it was telling about how we had went down deaths, tests and everything. We were looking good then, so it's not just all of a sudden last Friday. It's been since the middle of last month that we've been falling. And I see no problem with going with a 75%. Sounds good, but do wear a mask outside.
That's right. Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir, Brian?
Great, Brian. Steven, what, what would be required to change those limits?
I think the guidance that we just received from council would be fine. For the most part, staff's been enforcing those restrictions between, with discussion from the mayor and myself. We did talk about, the last time we opened things back up a little bit was, I think back in August. Whenever we presented to council to open up back for tournaments and the 50% restriction and council just kind of given their approval and agreement and that was all we really needed.
Is that okay, Brian? Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I agree with what has been said. Last month, we were discussing the possibility of adding a fine or penalty to the mask requirement. I don't think we need to do that with numbers headed in the direction they're heading. But I don't, I think it's too soon to abandon the mask requirement. So I think we should do that for at least another month.
Yes, thank you. Everybody agree? Anyone else? Good?
The only question I would have would be, I think Chief Byers is on here, if he had anything additional that he needed clarification on. Cause they're the ones that are really giving the calls with the questions.
Steven, this will give us our, our places where we can, we can tell these people what they can do. We got the, you know, we got 75% in there, so we can number that out. And then he'll know more about what they can do and that gives them the answer they're looking for. So we're good, we're good with this. Mask, I think should stay there too.
Great. All right. And I do want, while we're talking, I want to thank Brian for covering for me. Appreciate your help.
Yes, yes, sir. Brian did a good job.
Good, that's great. The next item is item three. And Adams, it'd be the annexation of some property on Rock Springs Road. And I'll let Steven discuss that.
Go pretty quick on this one. This is one that we discussed last month during the work session. It was on the agenda for council to approve for first reading last month. Again, this is two properties on Andrea Lane that are highlighted in blue. They back up Shadow Brook Apartments and border on Rock Springs Road. What Shadow Brook is proposing is to annex the, or requests to annex these as GR2, which match what Shadow Brook Apartments are. And what they've proposed is to expand a couple units of their apartments. They would be capped at 14 units per acre at GR2. The planning commission did approve unanimously. Council did approve at first reading last month. And I think the only question that arose last month was on Andrea Lane. And that is currently a road and entrance for Shadow Brook Apartments that comes out on Rock Springs. So there would be no additional road cuts or expansion of that entrance. And Mr. Holcomb, Mr. O'Shields and myself are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone have any question?
And this is an annexation.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
GR2.
Yes, sir.
And this is second reading.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is a rezoning property at Crestview Road in Sheffield Road to FRD. Now I'll turn it over to Steven.
We talked about this one last work session as this one being one that was coming in the next month. Both are the ones that we have on the agenda that are new this month. We kind of gave a heads up last month at the work session that they had applied to be on the planning commission agenda. So this one is the corner of Crestview and Sheffield. It totals about 5.7 acres. It is requested to be rezoned from, it is currently neighborhood commercial. And they have proposed a zoning of flexible review district. They have submitted some layout in all the documents for the FRD to satisfy that zoning. They have expressed interest in constructing the townhomes and they actually have the layout that you've received. I will point out that across the street, you have one set of townhomes that border Smithfield. And then if you look northwest by Audubon Acres, there's also a set of townhomes there. As well as further down Sheffield Road, just to kind of talk about the neighboring properties. On one corner, across the street, you have neighborhood commercial, which is a gas station. You have on the, across the other corner, you have a vacant lot on by the hospital. And then you have residential that is surrounding it on the west, south and east. This would be, planning commission did hear it in February and they approved unanimously for the rezoning. This would be first hearing and should council approve it, second here, second reading would be in April. If council denies it, it would end the and again, O'Shields are on here and we can answer or try to answer any questions that council may have.
Well, this, mayor, this is in my ward and I've been very close to this one. There's been a lot of written about this in opposition to this this rezoning to the 49 townhomes. Traffic issues is an issue, but in a lot of our rezoning like this, it's a traffic issue. That's a tough intersection that Sheffield and Crestview at peak hours. You notice, if you look at it real closer, there are five residential lots, large lots surrounding that. And I'm concerned, I walked the property, part of the property today. And I'm a little concerned about the setback and the buffer, the buffer for these two story townhomes. I think we need to look at that or have the developer look at that closer. And see what can be done on the, from that standpoint of buffers and setbacks. And also just in general, just the communications of this. Granted, there was no one there in opposition at the review meeting, but there's been an awful lot of opposition subsequent to that on the next door website.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pat, did you have something?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to emphasize that there would be only one entrance into the subdivision. And that was going to be off of Crestview. Also, I've gotten quite a number of calls on it or emails. And I don't think that the folks who are commenting to us realize that the existing zoning is neighborhood commercial. That's something that I would like to emphasize. There are a lot of questions by people who did not come to the public hearing. And I'm wondering if in the trying to promote more communications and better understanding of the project, if it might be worthwhile to talk with the developer about having a charrette or some sort of neighborhood group meeting where he can present his discussions and his plans a little bit better.
Yes, and I spoke with Steven about that today and he's going to talk with Mr. Holcomb. But we'll have to, you know, try to work with the developer and see if he would come and do that for us.
Since it's an FRD, we can, we can look at some changes before second reading.
Especially with the buffer.
We, yes, sir, in particular about the buffer. And I think it needs to be emphasized also that a lot of the drainage is going to be toward the intersection of the lot, not toward the surrounding properties. They're going to take the stormwater away from the adjacent property owners. And I think that needs to be expressed. We've already held a public hearing. We've done what was right, what was required. But I think there needs to be a bit more communication with the surrounding community so they can understand the project more fully. Thank you.
Yeah. Brian?
I agree with Kent and Pat about, I do think a community meeting type event would be beneficial to those who are in opposition. And, and I'd, like everyone else, have some, you know, some doubts about this. I would like to ask Tommy a question in particular, but before I do, Kent and I spoke about this and I mentioned to him that as much as, this is a more of a general observation and, and point that I'd like to make is that as much as I like work sessions, what I've seen and found, in my opinion, is we are much, on one hand, it's very, it's very good for us. It's educational. It provides us, you know, guidance as we move into the meeting phase of things. We know what's coming, we can discuss it. But my feeling is we tend to discuss the, in the work session, sometimes more than we do in the meeting. And we're more willing and, and to speak freely about it. Not everyone that joins our meeting can, you know, they're, they're not home at 5 o'clock. They're on the way home. So they're not able to jump on virtually and, and watch our, watch our meeting and our work session. So they, they don't know what's been said. And we tend, it's human nature, you know, during, during council, it's human nature maybe to not say the same thing we just said in the work session or as in great, in great detail as we, as we talked about. Because we've already said it. And so I think sometimes the community and those that, that do wish to watch, watch us may miss some of the things we said or the information that we discussed in the work session. So again, this is just general, I think, I don't have the answer, but I think maybe we want to think about that going forward. How we might could streamline it, I think in the interest of transparency and communication to our citizens, that might be, you know, an area we could make an improvement on possibly. I think it's worth a discussion as, as a council at home. Before I, go ahead, mayor.
No, no, go ahead, no.
Okay. Well, now go ahead and speak about that if you wish, and then I'll come back and ask Tommy a question on this.
Yeah, well, my, my only thing about this is, and I've expressed it to Kent, is we found out through this endeavor this gentleman was wanting to do, that state actually looked at this intersection 10 years ago. And several of y'all know Chuck Dawkins, which used to work for the highway department. He's the one done the study and he has a lot of the information. And it was put on hold at that time for some various reasons. But with that being said, if this project does not go forward, I don't see a reason for us to try to do anything with that intersection right now. If we already know, nothing can be done. Steven has went ahead and put in with GPATS and put this intersection in, I think as of today. And he made comment on that. Because knowing that this may pass and maybe others coming forward. GPATS, as you know, does a lot of funding for these things. And that could be three years away, but we still have to put in for it. But I know personally, and y'all do too, if you think about it, you've got to have growth like this for the state to step in and help you if state wrote. So, you know, that's, that's the key to it right there. Nothing's going to be done to it unless this growth happens.
And to your point.
Turn it back over to you, Brian.
To your point, mayor, whether this passes or not, it's still zone neighborhood commercial. So that doesn't mean there's not going to be growth here. If this zoning request is, is denied, because it's still, it still is zoned neighborhood commercial. Which leads me to my question to Tommy. Tommy, could you tell us a little bit about what types of development or businesses could go in under a neighborhood commercial zoning?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I hope everybody's having a good evening. There's a long, lengthy list and I don't want to just talk about the good or the bad. But of course we've got the little strip shopping centers that can go there. We've got the little stores, individual stores. You got the gas station, it's neighborhood commercial right across the street. It's neighborhood commercial caddy corner that the hospital owns. And like I say, the whole, whole length of things, anything that you see in that strip shopping center across the street can come there. So it, it, it can be used for a bunch of different
Yeah, Tommy. Just from my education, what's the difference between commercial and neighborhood commercial?
It's, it's the type, the sizes. You can't have a Walmart there. You could probably have one of the smaller Walmart stores or drugstore, community drugstore, something like that. The Ross's or the Home Depots, Lowe's, something like that, you cannot have now.
But a convenience store is appropriate.
That is correct.
I understand.
Along with, with a host of other things, yes. And like I say, sometimes I get accused of picking out the bad things and that's what I try to prepare people for. Sure as you don't say something about it, you know, they say, well, that ain't what he said. He didn't, he didn't tell me that. But it could be anything from a small store to a midsize store.
Yeah. In, in reading the proposal, I, they were forecasting a 7% increase in traffic coming out on, dumping out on the Crestview Road and then going to that intersection. And there again, if it were neighborhood commercial, that's another one, that's, that's difficult to predict what kind of traffic impacts that would have, wouldn't it?
Sure. And I, and I think the, the difference between the two likes is, is that the residential, like all residential, usually come and go at the same times versus the commercial is a constant through the day and the evening.
Well, that's good, good point.
And, and the other thing I want to caution in neighborhood commercials, you know, no matter what size the store, small, medium, there's no time limit on them, you know, and, and the lighting is different. But I, I really think that maybe us talking and, and the lighting is different. But I, I really think that maybe us talking with the developer about beefing up, especially the two sides that go up against the residential, some better, when we say two stories, we've got to remember, we're not talking about two stories with a different family living on the top. It's no different than the two-story homes that are there next, I don't know about next door, but, but on that street and the street behind. They're, they're all pretty well two-story homes. So we need to remember that. We're not talking about like a two-story apartment building, got two different families, two-story, single-family dwelling, which is what a townhouse is.
I understand.
Kent, Ms. Pat?
One of the things I wanted to remind people is that with commercial, you'll have dumpsters, and the dumpsters being emptied at different hours during the day, and the possibility of trash blowing out of that. Whereas with homes, you're going to have house pickup. Now, private roads, the city won't be doing the trash pickup. That'll have to be privately contracted. But it certainly would be quieter and of a more controlled nature.
Well, and the good thing about that, I think the roads are gonna be private, but they certainly wouldn't have the dumpsters banging because them are residents living in there themselves. That it would happen the first time, and they're gonna complain about it. So, you know, you're absolutely right on that, Ms. Webb.
If, Mr. Moore?
I was just thinking about that. Not only the traffic would pick up probably more in the daytime than it would at night with that shopping center, and be dead during the night like the residents, but the noise during the daytime. The commercial would be so much louder and project more noise than in the residents would at any time. So the noise and the lighting is a big factor in thinking about this also. Thank you.
That's correct.
Well, and I would, I would just tell everybody that, you know, we've kind of lived with that across the street. If y'all remember when the restaurant across the street came and had a little corner tavern there, the neighbors behind there was, was all mad, and I'm not blaming them, of course. But, you know, when you got neighborhood commercial, any type of commercial, but not residential, you know, when they start to, to build there, then there's a lot of concerns. So, you know, as I told one of them that called, talked to me, you know, you wouldn't want that your way. Well, I live that way. I live a half a mile from there. Go by there every day, both ways.
That's right.
You know, like Mr. Dykes, live that life. We know.
I go by that intersection daily. I agree.
Yep.
And you have to be patient at that intersection. You have to be patient.
That's right. As, as, as all four ways.
That's right.
Just, I did pull up and share, you should be able to see the neighborhood commercial district, just to answer some of those questions of things that could be, in the, in there you can see stores, retail store, including convenience, personal services, barbers, beauticians, coin laundry, dry cleaning, so on and so forth, animal hospitals. There's some special exceptions for bed and breakfast. And then the prohibited or sexually earned or even cell towers and off-premise signs. But there are, there are setback requirements and stuff for neighborhood commercial, as well as parking signs, buffer, and all of that. I just wanted to have this on here, because pretty much this first page gives you what's allowed. And everything that Tommy has been speaking of is, is what would be allowed. And those are things like an insurance agency, a dry cleaning, photographer studio, the, the small shops, the, things like that, convenience stores. So I just wanted to pull this up in case there was any additional questions or anything on the, on that usage.
I think Jim had, did Jimmy have your hand up?
Yes, sir. I think it is very important for city council to have a meeting that is actually open to the public before we have a final vote on this. I think we owe interested parties an opportunity to express their opinion with city council, face to face, of course, at a sufficient distance, and preferably with a mask.
Correct, yeah.
We need to have a public, actually open to the public before we have a final vote. And you'll hear me say that again later this evening, and probably in the future.
Yeah. Well, if everything goes good, we'll, probably our next meeting will be open, I hope. I think all of us will be back, hopefully healthy and ready to go. And Ms. Pat, you had something?
Well, I was wondering if we are in agreement that we could go to first reading and have that 30-day period. We do owe an obligation to the developer or the owner who has made the petition to move forward if we can. And we would have that 30-day period to hold another meeting, whether it be a charrette held by the developer, or a meeting that we sanction and we hold. I'm comfortable with either one of those.
Yep. And I think that's our plan as of right now. Kent?
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm agreeing with, with what Jim said and what Pat said. You know, I'm totally on board. I should be. We'll go through the first reading, but, you know, our challenge is to let's communicate this properly, and make sure everybody's on board with it, and look especially at those setbacks and buffers.
Yeah.
I wouldn't kill it on first reading. I would vote in favor of it, probably on, on first reading. But before there's a final second reading, I think we need to have a public meeting.
Correct. And just, just to let you know, for, for future, the development down there beside Middle Creek, the townhomes, they're actually, you know, they, they do their own garbage there too. But they're having a company come in and pick it up, so they will not have a dumpster. And so this place will probably do the same thing. They just charge each homeowner a regime fee. And in that regime fee includes them a can and, and pickup each week. Just so you, yes, sir, Mr. Moore?
For Mr. Holcomb. Mr. Holcomb, would you give me an idea, 5.75 acres of, I guess, I think that's what that was that we're talking about? When you're talking about that, I'm having a hard time on commercial, what you could actually put there. Let's make a reference to the size of something, something like a, a big service station, like on 123 QT or Spinks or something like that. Does that take up 5.75 acres, something that big to go there?
It does. That one, best way to reference this, Mr. Moore, is if you look at it, what Mr. Stees has colored in, and then look right dead across the street at, at the neighborhood commercial with the little strip shopping center that's there. Well, that one is probably four times, maybe five times bigger than what's across the street. And then that little strip shopping center there, of course, they've got the gas station. If you go around, they got the liquor store. And then they got the restaurant that takes up three or four buildings.
Well, this thing could actually do a big piece of commercial business there and cause a lot more traffic than that neighborhood. Is that not correct?
5.7 acres is, like I say, you can tell by looking at it, it's, it's a, it's a good-sized piece of property there. It's a prime piece of property, I'll be honest with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And moving from commercial to residential, I think is moving in a more restrictive direction.
Well, it's a downgrade, to be honest with you, Mr. Robinson. Anytime you go from commercial to residential, it's considered a downgrade.
Yeah, but I think these folks that are gonna be living in these, what I guess are townhomes, are gonna take care of their property and keep the trash picked up a lot better than a piece of commercial property would.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, if I could, when I say downgrade, I don't mean nothing about the, the, the stuff itself. I mean, as far as a zone, it's a step down from the, from, anytime you go from commercial to residential, it's a step down.
Got you. Okay.
It's less intense in its use.
That's correct. Yes, that's probably.
When you say step down, would this would affect the property values of the surrounding property? Is that what you're saying?
That's not what he means.
No, sir. No, sir. I'm talking about as far as use. It's not, as, as Ms. Webb said, it's not as intense was probably the more proper thing to say, because of.
Or more, it is more restrictive.
That's correct. Yes.
Correct. Yeah.
And from, from a standpoint of, of real estate, looking at it, highest and best use probably on that would be commercial. So the residential would be not quite as much of a highest and best use. And so they won't be able to sell the property for as much for residential as for commercial.
Yeah. Yes. And, and Tommy, I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but if it's, if it's, if it stays where it is, you can't control how many vehicles go in and out, or how many vehicles are parked there. If it goes what they're asking for, you can control it, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Next, Adam, I'm sorry.
All right. I was just gonna say, I know the question came up on comparison. I just wanted to give a comparison. I was looking at the zoning map while we're finishing discussion. A similar neighborhoods, neighborhood commercial zoning that is a little smaller, it's about four acres, four and a half acres, is the shopping center where Kelly's Pharmacy used to be with the doctor's office at the corner of McAllister and Brushy Creek. That is about an acre less in size. But that's just to give you the scale of that neighborhood commercial there with what is like, if you added in the daycare across the street, it'd probably be about the same size.
Okay. All right. If nothing else, we'll go to the, Adam C., which is rezoning property on Burdine Drive to O.I.
All right. So this one has been requested to be rezoned from R. 7.5, which is residential with 700, excuse me, 7,500 square foot lots, to office and institutional. The owner has requested this and expressed interest in constructing an assisted living facility on the site. Planning Commission heard it in February and took no action, either to approve or deny. However, they did make no motion to approve. This is coming to council for first reading this month. Second reading would be in April. I did highlight the partial in blue to kind of give you some of the surrounding uses. Again, it's similar to what we talked about. If you look across Burdine, at the intersection of Burdine and Robert P. Jeans, you will see the Willows and Waterford Apartments. Willows being a senior living facility. And then across the road, you have McKissick Elementary, which is, would be an office and institutional use, being a school. Again, to the east, it is boarded by single-family residential. So it's kind of in that transition right now between the two, the different uses. You have what's similar to it, south and west. And to the east of it, you have a little differing use of property. Again, we're on here. If you have questions, or try to give council any information they need. Thank you.
Nope, you're muted.
Okay, now I'm on. Well, naturally, like Kent said, this is in my ward, and I have talked to a lot of the residents at the Burdine Springs residential. And I went to the meeting with the planning commission, and they refused to even make a bonus. That's a refusal to approve it in my eyes. And I'm the first to say that, listen to the representation of the gentleman that represented it. This is something that Pickens County and the City of Eglie really needs. This facility is great. I think it's great, great service. Some of the stuff that he said it offered. But this is just the wrong location part, I feel. This is something I feel that should be a little more like out in the 153 corridor. That way they have access to Greenville, to St. Francis, 150, I mean, 153, 185 to Memorial, to a lot of the shopping centers, Sam's, Walmart, which they said they gave transportation. They said they'd run as many buses as they had to, all day long, to get the people to doctor's office, visit, shopping, groceries, whatever. So that's gonna put a lot of traffic on that little bitty road of Robert P. Jeans. And all of us know that road is not in good shape. It's a little winding road right there with a big hump, dip right there at the back of Burdine Springs. Plus, this would cause so much traffic to be cutting through that subdivision where there's numerous people walking, children playing, two-stop signs, which we already have problem with people cutting across from Robert P. Jeans Road over to 135 to take a shortcut. So this would just increase it. They already have the Willows right there in their back door at Burdine Springs. They can hear noises, they said, at 4:30 in the morning, with dumpsters being dumped, banging and knocking, lights coming from it. Sometimes you have ambulances coming in with sirens and lights on, very disturbing to that private neighborhood. And when they bought those homes at Burdine Springs, it was residential all the way around them. And I'm sure they expected it to stay residential at their place of dwellings, quite expensive homes. This whole thing here can't even be developed because the land's so rough where they're planning this. And I just don't feel like it's the right business at the right place. Good business, we need it, but doesn't feel like this is the right location. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Jim?
I don't want to kill it on first reading. I think it is very important to have a public meeting with city council that is actually open to the public before we have a final vote on it.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. What, go ahead, Terry.
Could we not go like we went with the other one? Just go with the first reading, and then have a meeting between this and the 30 days that we've got before the second one?
Yes, sir. And Tommy, you wanna give us some highlights, why they would not give some sort of yes, no to it? Maybe I missed something.
The, they, they heard from the developer, and then they heard from the, the citizens there. And the chairman called for a, a motion, and just none would be given. They did not really specify why, why not. It's only the second time it ever happened that I recall in 20-something years. But they, they, a non-vote like that is, is actually the turn-down of the request, because that's what they're voting on is, is the request. So if they didn't vote on it, then, and I told them that, and they was fully aware of that, and they still would not give a motion.
Okay.
And I think, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor, but I think, kind of like Mr. Moore said, that they realized that, that the intent, very good, it's almost the complete opposite of what we're dealing with on the, on the last one. That, this, that one's commercial, trying to go residential, and this one's residential, trying to go commercial, which is a little more harsh when you, when you're going up from residential to commercial. It's a good, it's a good thing to have, and very well indeed, as Mr. Moore said. Just, I think the commission just felt like that it was not.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Pat.
Go ahead.
The other thing I noticed is that the proposal will build one building, but then there might be some more and some more. And that concerns me because we don't really know what's going to happen there. If it, if it were tied down more closely, that would make me feel better about it. Once we give it O.I. or neighborhood commercial or whatever we have to put in there, then we don't really know what's coming next. So that, that's my fear. We, this is a good man. I'm not questioning the developer. I'm not questioning the intent. But that, that threat is out there.
Okay. Jim was next, I tell you.
This has nothing to do with the merits of the question, but if you can read the name of the creek that runs to the south of the property, please read the name of the
It's Mud Something, isn't it?
Mud Dog.
Mud Dog Branch.
Mud Dog Branch.
Mad.
Or is it mad?
Mad Dog Branch.
Okay, Terry, go ahead.
As we spoke a while ago, you know, they have, we do rezon this, to where they can have, if this developer, anything happens, they change their mind about building there, or they want to sell the property they bought, make a profit, whatever it may be. After we've zoned this, then we can't stop what kind of commercial property comes in there. It'd be wide open. It could be a lot of doctor's offices. It could be just about anything that they wanted to build, commercial.
That's correct. Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd.
Mayor, if you don't mind, we received an email from a Julie Howell, who is the realtor for the people wanting to build this project. And she explained in her email, I believe I sent that out to council. Did you want to go over that or just leave it?
No, we'll, if, if, I just, as long as you mail it out to council, I think we're fine.
Okay, it describes what the facility would be and what their intentions were.
Okay, yeah, because we, again, depending on what we do in the meeting, we still have another 30 days, so we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Terry.
One more thing. I want to make sure everybody got a copy of the letter that I emailed to you that we received from Burdine Spring Community Club in reference to this project. And some of the projects this developer has had in the past that left one building, for instance, on Highway 123 going to Greenville that's called Benzam and Franklin Plumbing, that building was there. And it's been sitting empty for so long and some more properties they had named in that letter to read from them to give them sort of a negative outlook there. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is item D. Naming of North A Street for Dr. John T. Simpson. And I think some of you have probably spoken to Rex Rice about this. He is, he is working on this, but he just wants our full support. And I'll let Stephen give you a few highlights. We've all researched a little bit about this gentleman and, and I do think it'd be a great idea. Stephen?
Yes, sir. I have some of the details here on the screen that you can go through and I'll touch on a few of them. Just to give you a little bit about Mr. John T. Simpson. He was born in 1867, died in 1939. He did serve as a educator and most people that I've heard refer to him, refer to him as Professor Simpson. Just a little background, the Easily Colored School was founded in 1900. You can see it had 107 students in a one-room schoolhouse. Professor Simpson started as a principal there in 1927. During his tenure there, he was able to expand it and add additional teachers before he died in 1939. The, they did rename the school to the Clearview Colored School in 1955 with the elementary department there known as the Simpson Elementary School. The Clearview Colored School was renamed, I should say, to the Simpson Academy in his honor in 1970. And it served the community until it was closed in 2011. This would allow the city to recognize the impact that John T. Simpson has had on the community and recognize his service and place in our history. If you drive over near where the Simpson School was, you'll see the Clearview Simpson Community. And that you'll see new, you'll see the street signs over there designating that community. I think it just makes it more. This is just a more official recognition to honorary name a street. I know the question always comes up when it talks about honorary naming of a street. Does not change the official name of the street. It will just be in honor of the person, so nobody's address or any of that will change. So I know that's always some people's concerns when they hear something like this going on. I think we're actually changing the official name of the street. But I can try to answer any additional questions. I know Councilman Webb came in earlier and we chatted a little bit. So anything else that you may have, we're here to try to answer.
Terry?
I've done quite a bit of research on this. I got a book here from Pickens County School District. And it's the history of the schools of Pickens County located back on 259. As this Stephen said, this school was organized from 1900. Just a point of interest to it, the value of the grounds and the furniture and the building in 1900 was $400. That was the total value of it and it had 107 pupils. But I think this is a great honor just to honor him and what he achieved at that time. Because I know it was really a burden to achieve that at that time for the African-American people. So I'm just thankful for he done what he done and our African-American community. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, Terry. This is a very good gesture and sounds like a very fine gentleman. I totally on board with it.
Yeah, and unless they change their mind, there's just a section of North A Street that will be named or the, the signs will be up. So unless Stephen knows something different, that's, that's what I was told.
That, that's what I've heard. I, I think it's supposed to run.
I think it's down at the bottom of the hill where it kind of starts down.
What sections it's going from. I can't remember the name of the streets.
Yeah. It's on down where the, the islands end and then from there on down to, I think, Fleetwood.
Heaton Circle is the name of it, I think.
Maybe so. It right in there, yeah. Okay, all right. All right, nothing else? Item E. Certification of Properties for Abandoned Building. Which is the next item. Stephen, I'll turn it over to you. You must be muted.
Oh, I was, sorry. Thank you. So the, I forgot to put a slide in here for this. I was gonna dress both of them on one slide, but I know they're in the council meeting. This is for the Geddes Middle School, the old Geddes Middle School and the old post office. The developer has asked us to certify them as abandoned buildings, which means that they have not held a business in them for five years. They have signed affidavits stating to that point, "We have searched for any light business licenses that have been issued for those properties and have not found any within the last five years." This will allow them to access credits through the state of South Carolina for the redevelopment that's being completed. The one for Geddes Middle School on Stewart Drive, you actually certified that one back in 2000, in 2020 in August, I believe it was. However, they have gone back and done some redesign and the number of units has decreased in that development. And they've asked for it to be recertified for the correct number of units. The one that is the old post office on East First, this would be the first time that you would be certifying it.
Any questions? None? Item F. Conveyance of Walnut Hill right of ways. Stephen?
So we discussed this one last month as well. Council approved it first reading in February. You can see the two right of ways that are highlighted here in white. The developer, which is Companion, they have the multifamily on the northeast of the map you're looking at. They also own the property to the southwest of that intersection. They approached the city about requesting those two right of ways so that they can tie them into their properties. And they're planning on doing more development in that area for an expansion of the services that they are offering back there. The property that is listed as property under development to the north that is being developed in the single-family housing, they do not need access to that right of way to connect in the Walnut Hill. They will be connecting further west on that road out towards the intersection. So they do not need access. And both of these, I think, James is on here yet. They had asked last month for him to, to complete the. He did those and they did, he did that on their behalf and we would record those if council approved. Brian, I think you're on here. Could you just clarify that?
Yes, that's correct.
We can answer any questions that council may have.
If none, we'll move to the next item. Item G, reappointment of municipal judge.
So Jeff Sterling is up. He was appointed in April of 2019 to a two-year term. He, I will let, I think Judge Snow, are you on? Would you like to address this one? And, and I know you've had a conversation with him and he's interested in continuing on with the two-year term. And I believe you're recommending it. So I don't know if you wanted to speak on his behalf or answer any questions that council may have.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, I would, I would ask you to consider to reappoint him for the two-year term beginning in April. He has been a valuable asset to the court since I've been here. We have benefited from the fact that he is, is an attorney and that helps us. If we have some questions that I'm, that I need assistance on, he has done a good job. And I'm, I'm glad he has expressed an interest to continue on in this role. So I would request that you make this approval.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Yeah?
How, how much is, how many hours a week is he working?
Well, it varies from week to week. He shares the court responsibilities with me. He does, he, he, he does share the overnight call with me on an equal basis. Fortunately, the police department is kind enough not to call us out too much. But, but he is, he is available on call and he, I would say probably in any given month, he's probably working, I don't know, 25 hours maybe, somewhere in that vicinity, I would say. As far as actively he.
And, and I, I don't know this for sure, but with the court having been limited through COVID, don't know what the plan is to use him a little bit more as court opens back up. I think Judge, you can open court back up in April?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We, we currently have on the docket to have a, a week of jury trials, the week of April the 12th. We've been able to resume normal court operations based on our safety plan that we submitted to the courts for beginning March the 17th. So we will be back in full swing as far as the, our staffing is concerned. It will require us to utilize both courtrooms at the same time. So I fully expect that, that Jeff Sterling will be probably working more in the next month or two than he has been in the last several months. But until we had this last shutdown, he, he was holding court once, at least once a week and sometimes twice a week.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go to the next item. Item H. Awarding of Stormwater and Road Servicing. Stephen?
So as you're aware, we did a bond last year for $790,000 to complete some stormwater repairs and upgrades. This is to get ahead of a lot of the stormwater issues that are presenting themselves throughout the city. We issued an invitation for bid, included 17 projects throughout the city. Advertised it January 19th. It closed February 23rd. We received five total submittals. And going through, at least each submit, each person that submitted was a low bid on at least one of the projects. So what we have asked is that we have the ability to award to all five of the contractors. Just to give you an example, for example, like yard mender, et cetera, they were the low bid on one of the pond repairs. But, you know, KMI might have been the low bid on a couple, a couple of the pipe replacements. And Howard might have been the low bid on four pipe replacements, but they were all the low bid on something. So what we're looking to do is to break the award down and award each project to the lowest bidder so we can get the most done for the money that we have to put out there.
Well, that and we can get the projects all started at the same time.
Correct. We can, we can actually, if we award them out, though, for the most part, there's about four of them that will get about three projects each. And a couple of them that will get a little more than that. But yeah, we can, we can start really making some progress on these. And while we're talking about this, just an update, because I know there's been some questions asked about Dogwood and South Second. I sent you a note that those are out for bid right now. The, we opened bids March 29th and the goal is to have that on the April agenda for council to approve. And then we're hoping that work will begin on those two roadways, those two, sorry, culverts, probably within the month after that. So we're hoping this summer we'll get both those projects complete and those roads back open.
And that was Dogwood and South Second, correct?
Yes, sir.
Hey, any other questions? We'll move to.
Oh, hang on, sorry. So the road service was a little similar. We had 29 roads and seven groupings that we did throughout the city. We advertised it at the same timeframe. We did receive five submittals. However, we're only asking for permission to award to three of these. All three of them were the low bid on something. But for the most part, Vineski and King were the two, were the two that had the lowest. The other reason we're asking for this is last year we used Vineski to do all the road repaving. We kind of want to have some options and do a little kind of award. Again, we can get more done going at the same time. But as well to compare a little bit of the quality from the different contractors as we move forward to make sure that we are holding all to the same standard and make sure that we're getting the work that we anticipate so that these roads, when they're done, we don't have to go back to and touch up and repair for a long time. So we're asking for permission to be able to award to those three, Vineski, King and Pickens Construction for the projects.
Who, who, Pat, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon. I, I didn't mean to interrupt, but this is a lot of work. And we've got a lot of contractors and they will be working simultaneously. Is public work's gonna have supervisory capacity to handle all of these at the same time? That, that was my concern.
That's part of the conversation we're gonna have moving forward, especially later this week, is to make sure that we are comfortable with awarding out them in groups. And I don't know that, we're not gonna award them all out at one time, especially on the road resurfacing just because the funds for that comes in throughout the year. But we'll probably award a couple clusters out at the same time, just, and we can, we can handle that, that, that work fine. But I think with them staggered out, we should be, we feel comfortable being able to man, to manage the projects to make sure they're being done properly.
Okay, have we ever used the Pickens Construction before?
We have not. We've used Vineski and we used King. Never used Pickens. And that's kind of what I was mentioning about being able to kind of compare quality. Wouldn't mind having a, a third one just to maybe give them a couple roads to pave so we could compare to see how they do versus the two we've normally used, which is Vineski and King. It's always good to have additional option out there in case we need to get, get work done.
Is the name because they're from Pickens or because their last name's Pickens?
I can, if you give me a second, I'll pull their bid, but I think it's because they're from Pickens. Hang on just one second.
Okay, all right.
That is correct. They're from Pickens.
Are they? Okay. I'm just not familiar with the name. I didn't know.
Actually, they list McGee Road and Anderson as their home address, as their, as their business address.
Okay, okay. All right, well, that's fine.
Then the guy who signed his last name's Crocker, so I don't know who the owner, their last name's Pickens or not.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Okay, we'll move to the next item, item four. And that's project updates from the staff. Stephen?
I didn't attach any pictures or anything this month. I wasn't sure how long it was gonna take us to get through all the rezonings. I wasn't sure how long it was going to take us to get through all the rezonings and all the agenda items. Um, just to give an update on the ops and maintenance, it is, uh, in punch lists. Um, I will say we are very thankful that we've seen about five days without rain. We're also very thankful that we have about five more without rain. Uh, so far in the forecast, that means that, um, actually they passed compaction today on, um, all the subgrade. So that means that they will be putting binder in and we're hoping finished asphalt, uh, by the end of the week. And the architects and engineers are out this week to do punch list items. And we're hoping right now we're shooting for the rough estimate of kind of April Fool's Day, that weekend, to kind of start that transition into the new facility. Um, the fire station, they have been putting up, uh, sheet rock. They'll be mudding and finishing a lot of that and putting primer up over the next week. Once we get some electrical finished, they'll start doing, uh, the ceilings. And once that's done, it'll start, you know, you'll start seeing cabinetry and a lot of other stuff go in. If, again, if you would like to take a tour and see anything, we're always available to take you out and walk you through. Um, the buildings, especially the ops and maintenance are locked down now. So we'll need to be out there with you so we can get you in. Couple things that are keeping us, that, that will determine when we move in ops and maintenance is working on getting the fiber connection in now and getting the network up and running. We're hoping that'll be done by end of the week. Allow us to finalize getting the phones, the computers and all that stuff set up for the staff so they can begin transferring equipment and offices over there.
Okay. Any question? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, budget.
Just wanted to remind on the budget calendar, um, our retreat's coming up this Friday. We'll be meeting at South and West. Um, well, so if you have any questions between now and then, please feel free to reach out. Um, just to kind of reiterate, the goal is to present the draft budget to council at the April 12th council meeting. Um, if you would look at April 20th and 22nd, those are the proposed budget work sessions. Um, and if we need to go beyond that, we can always schedule more. Um, I think last year we just had to have the two, so didn't go too far beyond that right now. Uh, first reading would be at May. That's when it's presented to the public. And then second reading is the public hearing at the June council meeting. And the first day of the budget would be July 1. Still seems far off, but it'll be here before we know it. Um, just like the adoption of last year's budget just seemed the other day and here we are working on next year's. Um, if you have any questions or concerns about the budget or anything, please feel free to reach out to me and I'll see what I can, see if I can answer them.
Seeing no questions, we'll move to the next item, which is just updates from many departments. And I'll open up the council first to see if y'all have. Well, I see y'all are on here. Okay. Let's let the council go first. Y'all have anything to bring up? No items? Okay. Department heads?
Mr. Mayor, if I could bring up one thing, just so there's no surprise at the council meeting. Jerry O'Shields and myself has presented a, uh, a, uh, under new business, the first reading of ordinance for the updated floodplain management. Floodplain falls under the building officials' office and Jerry and I, along with the lady from the state, uh, they had like a four or five-word change that they had to make in our, uh, ordinance. And Jerry took care of that. Uh, but, um, I just wanted to be sure that y'all was aware that that's, that is coming up tonight. It's not no major change to the floodplain ordinance. Everything stayed the same. It was just three or four or five words that we had to get corrected on it.
Tommy, I apparently overlooked that one.
I, I did too, so I, 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 I didn't even think about to sit in here and look at it. Uh, myself or Jerry O'Shields is, is prepared to tell you what it was, but most of them was just one word here and one word there. It was, uh, it, it affects the, uh, citizens in, in no way and affects the city in no way. It was just some cleanup that the state recommended. And just bringing up the date, the reason that we have this ordinance is, uh, that allows us, where if we do have a flood problem and FEMA has to come in, uh, that, that makes us eligible for FEMA to come and assist us. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all we have there. And, uh, what I'd like now is for us to take a recess. And, yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I just read more of this book. I'm really excited about this Dr. Simpson thing. Just wanted to throw this out here for information. In 1913, they hired one teacher to teach their first, had a first grade certificate and an annual salary of $330 a year.
Wow.
So it's amazing what this gentleman did or what he had.
Yep, that's right. All right, well, we'll take a recess till seven o'clock and then re, reconvene. Thank you.